...within the city of Fullerton. After that, the parties are then entitled to, if they so desire, to proceed their next step, which is to go to the courts in the state of California and seek redress there. Whether these officers elected do so is their determination, not our determination, but they cannot do so until such time as they have fully exhausted their administrative rights within the city of Fullerton. Once the council has acted, that will have exhausted their administrative rights. At that point in time, they would have the right to proceed towards any litigation if they so desire. The reason I point that out at this point in time is the city council is in a position where certainly they're the elected voice of the community. They're also sitting in the dual role of being the judges in this particular case. And as such, they must remain neutral and silent with respect to any judgment regarding these officers because they're going to ultimately serve as the judges when this matter comes before them. At that point in time, they will be able to express their decision, and at that point in time, after the decision, would be free to discuss with the public their analysis and thoughts and findings associated with those hearings and the circumstances. However, during this procedure, to protect the lawful rights of the officers, the city council must act fairly and impartially so that they can properly judge the appeal should the appeal come forward to the city council. And at that point in time, if the officers choose then to proceed to further litigation, that would be their determination. The other matter which is coming before the city is the civil lawsuit brought by Mr. Thomas. That matter is also proceeding. Mr. Thomas, as is his lawful right, has brought an action against the city and the police department regarding the death of Kelly Thomas. That matter is before Judge Kirk Nakamura, and is proceeding through the civil process. The city has retained outside counsel with the assistance of our insurance company. Mr. Dana Fox is our legal counsel, and Mr. Thomas obviously has representation as well. To my knowledge, the next status conference is set for late January, the 31st of January, in which the parties will discuss what the status of that matter is. At this point in time, there's no decisions for the city council. As is a civil matter, as the parties, in this case, the plaintiffs, so elect to proceed. At this point in time, there's no decisions for the council regarding those civil proceedings, and Mr. Fox is representing the city. Let me also indicate with respect to the employment, I did not indicate, but the city council and police department have also retained the outside services of a public employment law specialist, the firm of Lieber, Cassidy, and Whitmore, to assist the city with respect to the employment matters, and are advising the city with respect to these hearings and the proceedings that are proceeding regarding the employment of these three officers. Again, the process could seem cumbersome and take some time, but it's a matter with the laws that the city of California provide, and we are adhering to those legal requirements. Thank you.
Does anyone on the council have a question? The city attorney?
I do. I would like our city attorney to explain to the public what happens if any of us up here state an opinion that has anything to do with the employment or continued termination of the police officers in question.
There are really two consequences. The police officers are entitled to receive a fair hearing if you've not prejudged it. If you render opinions or take actions that would demonstrate that you prejudged or have an opinion prior to hearing all the evidence, then you'd be disqualified. If you do participate and are disqualified, then a second condition arises. But if you have prejudged the circumstance, the police officers could ask for your dismissal, and you ask a judge for your dismissal, so you cannot participate in the decision. Secondly, if the proceedings take place and this body is determined to be biased prior to the actual hearings, the three police officers involved would have the opportunity to claim wrongful termination, that the hearing was biased and prejudiced, and denied their constitutional due process rights, so it exposed the city to further litigation and liability should the city council act in a predetermined biased manner.
Any further questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm going to open this up for public comment. I believe Mr. Thomas should have the first number.
Yes, and if speakers two through five could please come line up behind me.
This is concerning what we've labeled as item 12 that we hold out of order.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to show my appreciation to Chief Hughes, his stance on not wanting to reinstate these officers and sticking to his decisions as far as termination. Throughout the last two and a half years, I spoke personally, actually face-to-face, with U.S. Attorney, and he said, "Just call him anytime." So I did this afternoon to get an update. But now that it is possibly going to an investigation, and that's the way they stated it, they can't talk to me about anything. So what I really want to ask for the people this evening is, first of all, the citizens of Fullerton, don't judge myself, the family, or Kelly's army by the actions of some this weekend. We don't condone it, we don't accept it. At no point do we ever want to interfere with the lifestyles of the public, the flow of traffic, or any citizen. We don't condone tagging or anything that was done this weekend, no violence at all. I would like to ask the public to speak on this matter. I would encourage everyone to support Chief Hughes. You covered it perfectly by asking the city attorney, and he answered it properly about you folks, if you speak up about this, how detrimental it could be if you showed bias in a comment. I wanted to cover that. And when the folks come up here, I would really like to ask them to do it in a civil manner, and I've done so, and I've had overwhelming response that they would. After all, you weren't on the jury. You didn't kill Kelly. This is an administrative action, and I understand the folks of the community wanting to just express how they feel about these guys getting their jobs back. So thank you again, Chief Hughes. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Chapey. Council. My name is Jaye Rans. I also advocate for people to protest. The protest is important. It did get us as far as we have today, and has brought the community together. I want to compare with the opinion that some people hold that the officers were found not guilty, and how that can happen, and put in perspective what an okay day that was just celebrated yesterday. And back during the days when people were protesting peacefully for their rights, it was appropriate policy for the police to fire cases against women and children. It was acceptable. And while a number of people found it reprehensible, it was okay in those days. Well, now, we're looking at our policies that apparently our current training officers who have been court and said were appropriate policies. And some people today may say those are appropriate policies. But there's probably the majority of us that know that they're wrong. Just because that one in court, we all know in our heart of hearts what is right and what is wrong. And I would just like to advocate that we clearly have a problem with our police policies, and we need to have it at community standards. And that's why I'm still continuing to advocate for civilian police oversight. And what's been stated by our attorney, the city attorney, Jones, tonight was that you as the council cannot serve in that role from day to day because the role, the special role that you play in the Kelly hearing process. And therefore, you need to have a committee of your selected peers to fill that role in providing guidance and oversight of our police department. Furthermore, I'd like to advocate that even our, almost all of us would consider, well, it's our only newspaper in town, the editorial column, they closed their comments this Sunday in their editorial saying, "Our hope is that the sad and unfortunate death of Kelly Thomas becomes a catalyst for reform and great our accountability by law enforcement to the public in Fullerton and far beyond." And that's exactly what POCSE has been working to do, not just here in Fullerton, but with Anaheim, with all of our brothers and sisters who want to do the right thing now and not be judged in the future for our misactions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rans.
I'm on the page of the POCSE and the Police Oversight Propotable Committee, and I want to read something. It is up to you to determine whether the defendants used excessive or unreasonable force based upon all the evidence that has been presented in this trial. Judge Froberg, sorry, instructed the jury. The law has faith in ordinary citizens being able to recognize unreasonable use of force by police officers. Yet the Fullerton Chief of Police and some Fullerton City Council members argue that ordinary citizens would not be able to understand the complexities of police work. Now, can somebody explain that to me? Because it doesn't make much sense. And the CIOU also recommends that we institute a civilian oversight.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. City Attorney, could you maybe explain the jury instructions?
Well, I don't know. I wasn't part of the trial, so the jury, the judge charged the responsibility of explaining the law to the jury, and I assumed that was a discretion given at the time of the trial as far as the law.
Okay, I'm not concerned with hearing the court. What I'm concerned with is why in the court, they have compliments and normal average everybody says to them to understand police work. Yet here, you say that we wouldn't understand the complexities of police work. That's the rub that I have.
Thank you for the explanation. May we have the next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Christine Walker, and I'm a resident of Huntington Beach, but born and raised here, ninety-five percent of my family lives here, ninety-five percent of my friends live here. First and foremost, Dan, I need to say thank you so much for giving me faith in the police department. On Monday, I was in shock. It's wearing off. I was in shock. I was in shock all the way until Wednesday. And on Thursday, I found a way to turn my hate into love, and I was able to do that. And it's something that I'm going to be doing on a weekly basis now, and I'm very excited about it. But I do have to say, we had two Fullerton cops get up on that stand and lie through their teeth. Does that make them a Brady cop right here and now, or is that something that we have to do to make them Brady cops? I understand you might not be able to answer me now, and I know your door is always open, so I'm definitely going to be talking to you in regards to that. I'm a little bit stressed about the fact that we do have lying police officers on our force. That is something that needs to be talked about. It's just wrong and disgusting. And I have no idea why, when we asked for the, Mr. Jones, I'm talking to you too, when we asked for the records, you know, for their employment records, why it was held up, that just made us look dirty. That just made the city of Fullerton look really bad, and it was disgusting that it held up. You need to participate. United, we stand; divided, we fall. We've all come together to do what we can. We need to do what we can, and there's a time and a place for everything. I don't like to throw things in people's faces, but I do need to remind you, there was a recall, and that's why a lot of you are sitting up there, and because we believe in you, and we know that you're here to do the right thing. I know you can't give your opinions, but I hope to God that you do do the right thing because Sisney should have never been hired in the first place, Pat McKinley. I'm really glad that we did get Pat out of this city because he was where a lot of the dirt started. Sellers was just wrong in itself, and I'm glad that we scared him out of the city, too. And I'm glad that we were able to, at least the strong ones and the knowledgeable ones have stood behind you, Dan. And DiCaprio, I just can't say thank you enough for everything that you've done for this community. And with police officers like you, I really hope that those police officers that are standing behind you right now and all throughout the city, that they do understand that there are good cops out there. And I do believe there are good cops out there, but the sad thing is, there are bad cops out there. And when they're bad, you need to say something, you need to do something. Because to tell you the God's honest truth, those three cops that are still on the force, it's gross. And I know that they would own the city if we fired them, but they shouldn't be there. And I hope that they're scared because there are a lot of angry people out here, and I hope that we can decide to come together and unite and work together. I really do. So out with the bad and in with the good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on speaker number five, so with six through ten, would please come line up? And if you could remember to please lean into the microphones when you speak. Apparently, your folks at home really want to hear what you're saying, and they can't hear every word.
Hello, and Jerry. I'm glad, Dan, that you've gone with an outside firm. That really shows us that you are working on this and dealing with this. You and I have talked before several times. You had mentioned going with the video device, much like the DAR. I hope you're still leaning on that and working on that. I hope with this firm that you're looking really heavily at the physically fit, and also at remaining, that they remain that way, not just when they get onto the force, and that the people that you hire are not receiving any kind of disability pension from any other job, regardless of the type of person they're not. I agree, Sisney should have never been hired. He still, to this day, receives a disability pension from LAPD. That should not have happened. I sat in court, and I was just dismayed and amazed at the officer's testimony that both Ramos and Sisney and all the other officers were trying to do what they did, and that was okay. I want to say I appreciate that the officers were, I guess, ordered to stand down on Saturday until things kind of got out of hand. It made it very nice for us to get out there and do what we wanted to do. However, unfortunately, and I would like to speak with you at break time, and hopefully with the two women on council, because I had an encounter that was embarrassing, degrading, and humiliating so much so that I went out on camera and was on the line with three officers. I've tried to call you today and yesterday, and I've yet to mention it. So anyways, I want to also, I know I'm supposed to speak to you, Dan, give a shout out to whoever did the tagging. You people are disgusting. We live here. We have to look at it. I'm thankful for Bats, who cleaned up through the window at Slide Bar. You people who tagged out at the memorial, you desecrated somebody's memorial, that's like when you go to cemetery and tagging a tombstone. You're a sick, hateful people. I want to give a shout out to Genevieve Fazar, who lost a son in Alpine to law enforcement, and Sonia Hernandez, who lost her brother. They themselves started a band, and Corey Klein, who's in the audience, helped to protect the small dog from being damaged by protesters. And I wish I had had written down, I would love to quote Genevieve, who said something to the effect, "We are not violent. We do protect others." Something that law enforcement needs to learn. Thank you.
My name is Tony Brandonberg. I live in the city of Sierra Madre, California. In the fall of 2010, and in subsequent months, my autistic son was petitioned out of our neighborhood public school by an aggressive group of parent vigilantes who did not understand his behavior. This was accompanied by surveillance of our home, calls to the local police department, and false reports filed against my child, calls to child protective services, frequent physical restraints and isolation by staff from the Pasadena Unified School District, and the eventual escorts to school by our local police department. One of the many heroes in the sad struggle we have endured was a local police officer who was the first responder to the school one morning, and who recognized in my child a behavior pattern that he recognized in a member of his own family. In the years that have followed, we found a community support in what we all believed was the most unlikely of places, the police department. In the fall of 2011, my wife and I began our active participation in protesting the circumstances surrounding the horrific death of Kelly Thomas, and befriended the people that you are familiar with that are in the city, many of whom we've known for more than twenty years. We, like many people, are haunted and fearful for our communities by not only what transpired in July of 2011, but by the court ruling that was delivered last week. We will never accept the verdict of the twelve accomplices that served on the jury, nor the verbiage spewed by the accomplices on the defense team. We are hardly novel in that regard. We believe the civil rights of Kelly Thomas, a man with mental illness, as protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act, were violated. The Bill of Rights of any agency does not supersede the United States Constitution. I promise you, this is far from over. We will continue to support the family of Kelly Thomas and of any families who are vilified by members of their community, whether it be by law enforcement, by appropriate policies, by school districts, by mental health facilities, or by any agency designed and designated to serve all, not just some members of our community. Chief Hughes, I thank you for the position you've taken. You've done petitioners to your local police department who have failed your community. Under no circumstances should they be even considered for rehire. Tonight, my intentions are very simple. I wish to ask this board and the members of this community to learn about and design a memorandum of understanding between your school districts and your police department for responses to all members of your student population. This component is part of your school district's Safe Schools Plan. Know what your police department's response plan is when they are called to a school on an agency assist. I could not find this online. My second intention is to ask that you yourselves and your school personnel and your police department learn about differences in behavioral responses by some of our citizens. We do not all respond under the same under stress.
Can you please wrap up?
I will. I'm sorry. It's very intimidating for any citizen to be asked to look a group of men in the eyes, maybe not even understanding what that means. A person with autism or mental illness does not understand this. Complex and multi-step commands given to an individual is not only intimidating but disorientating for many typical citizens. It's even more so for a person with mental illness.
Thank you, sir. We need to speak.
Cognitive challenges. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry. I try myself.
That's right. I know you have a story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Johanna Falke, and I am a resident of Costa Mesa. I've been a supporter of Kelly Thomas for the past two and a half years. And I just have a few, couple of things I just had to get off my chest tonight. A 1998 LA Times article stated that although it pained the department to conclude that Sisney could no longer serve as a patrol officer, it was an obvious and necessary decision to ensure the safety of all Los Angeles police officers and residents alike. They already knew. They knew the possibility that Sisney may have undergone severe trauma that has never been adequately addressed is even worse. And now to add to it, his involvement in the beating death of Kelly Thomas. And how about Ramos, expressing his love for cholos, who will beat a bitch down, and selling accused t-shirts, which in my opinion is not appropriate behavior for a cop who was on trial at the time for second-degree murder. His comments are disturbing, cruel, floodlight, and very inappropriate. I think that when a defenseless homeless man is beaten to death on our streets by police officers sworn to protect and serve, and then found not guilty by our court system, it is a little more than outrageous. It is unsettling, and I do not support this verdict whatsoever. As a tarnished city, Mayor Chapey and city council members, you need to continue to move forward and support Captain Dan Hughes and his decision to not rehire Sisney, Ramos, or Wolf. Please consider this common goal we have, and that's to clean up the police department. As Albert Einstein said, "The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them without doing anything." Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Boyer.
Yes, Richard Boyer, Tony, your resident. I've been hearing, listening to Mr. Jones talk about the rights of the officers, what rights did Kelly Thomas have the night that they beat him to death? Don't understand that at all. They got all these rights that they can go through. It's just, why are we going to waste our money on that? Those guys were guilty. As far as I'm concerned, the verdict was just unbelievable. What more do they want in that video? I mean, Sisney comes out, and he says, "Well, I beat his head to hell." That's an admission of guilt right there. I mean, you watched the video, and you could only see a grin. It was a murder. And how they got away with it is completely illegal. I'm not surprised, but I'm very angry that we have to wait longer now for justice. Kelly Thomas didn't have any rights the night that he was killed. And for what? For sitting on a curb, doing nothing, done nothing wrong, didn't commit any crimes or anything, and they still beat him to death. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, so the members of the city council, my name is Jack Arbery. I'm not from this city, but I just want to say that Kelly Thomas cries for justice still rain out to all peoples, fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, and citizens all over the country. Do the right thing by rejecting the rehiring of Jace Sisney, killer of a helpless soul. Do the right thing as a nation is watching. Who steps up to lead against violence toward million-year-old people? As a father on the call, I would not allow my sons to even party in this city, as long as you have those three cops that are still employed by your city. Okay. Thank you.
We are on speaker number 10, so of 11 through 15, would please come line up.
Good evening, Mayor Chapey, and members of the city council, and Chief Hughes, and other departments of the city. A lot of people are very angry tonight. We realize you weren't on the jury, and that's just the point. Somehow, you know, we have a contradictory situation going on here. One of the more alarming things to come out of the recent trial, aside from the verdict itself, was the testimony of current police officers that the accused did not or barely violated department policy in their actions the night that Kelly Thomas was beaten into brain death. It's hard for many of us to reconcile that apparent contradiction, and so I think many of us would like to hear something from Chief Hughes regarding that testimony, and whether or not, in fact, that kind of behavior is acceptable for a training. So we thank you in advance for that attention. You know, ultimately, what happened is a man is dead, and yet no one has been held responsible in the legal sense. And, you know, there's, people feel powerless, there's almost nothing we can do about it. And for that reason, I would like you to consider reopening the topic of civilian police oversight in Fullerton. We need a civilian advocate there. It cannot be completely left up to the city council. Somebody has to be there to represent the people of this city, the residents of this city. And anybody who would like to find out more information can find us on Facebook at Police Oversight Propotable Committee. You can find that at facebook.com/POP2012. That's POP2012. And I think we would advance for your attention to that matter.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chief of Police Dan Hughes. I was actually in the Citizens Academy not too long ago, and I still see you guys as my heroes, my family advocates, police officers, and we love police officers. My brother wanted to be a police officer, but a few months after I graduated from Citizens Academy, the Kelly Thomas thing happened, and I was really disappointed. I couldn't believe, it was, it didn't make sense to me. I couldn't believe it was, it didn't make sense to me. And I talked to thirty other families who they lost their children because of police brutality, and I don't want this to happen anymore. This is very unacceptable. I just wanted people to know that we, the people, have a lot of power. We have to stand up for what's right. I'm really glad that a lot of people filmed exactly what happened. And Chief Dan Hughes, thank you again. I can't thank you enough. But that's basically it. I'm very thankful that Mr. Thomas, Mr. Thomas is really brave. You're an amazing father, sir, and I can't imagine the pain that you feel every day, but just know that all of us are here for you. And, yeah. Thank you, people of Fullerton. Thank you, Ghosts2Ghosts, for doing what you do for the homeless population. And just know that, I just wish for a community where we can run to police officers instead of run from them. For women who are running away from sexual assault, I wish they could go to the police instead of fear that from the police. I wish that children who are looking for safety can go to the police officers instead of fear for their lives, so they have to be racially profiled or stopped and pissed by police. I just, I know that it's very hard, what you guys go through. My brother went through the, I can't explore that. I went through Citizens Academy, did a lot of ride alongs. You guys are awesome. Just please take out those people, and thank you for your decision not to rehire them. It really means a lot to us, so, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Stephen Baxter. I'm a resident of Fullerton, and I've been an advocate for getting justice in this case of Kelly Thomas. Very disappointed in the verdict, of course, you're not responsible, in fact. The citizens of Fullerton, pretty much the only aspect of this entire thing that has gone right, the citizens of Fullerton, this community stepped up unlike any other community in the history of California, came together, went with this family for two and a half years, tried to get this young man justice. The system failed Kelly Thomas, and ultimately Kelly Thomas will never get justice in the traditional sense. It did not fail him because he's homeless. It failed him because he's not a cop. The system is predisposed to favor the police. So we're just dealing with that reality. Now, the reasons for the not guilty verdict are beyond me, that I know part of it must be the fact that two officers currently employed by this city, Steven Rubio and Kevin Craig, came to the defense of Ramos and Cissonelli. Steven Rubio said that, all things considered, they didn't violate any policies or procedures. When they beat him, when they tasered him, when the taser ran out and they flipped it and they beat him some more, when they left him for dead and did nothing for him, when they mocked him, when they escalated the situation, none of that is in violation of the policy? I don't know. I don't know what the policy is. But if that's why it's a not guilty, then culpability has just shifted to the department itself. By finding Cissonelli and Ramos not guilty, we have condemned the Fullerton Police Department if the reason for that not guilty are the policies and procedures and the training of these officers. That's the math. And if we can accept that, then we must do something about it. And that's something that we need to take a look at what these policies are.
No.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Adam Alder, longtime resident of Fullerton. That trial was a sham. It was a complete sham. Mr. Rukakis, out of the hundred eyewitnesses that could have been called to the stand, the other videos, didn't call one. It was the limpest case I ever saw. So, of course, I don't want to accept that verdict. There was no justice, as that is the case many, many times. So that's my thoughts on that. Please do not hire those other officers, those officers back, and it's a disgrace that those three that murdered Kelly Thomas are still on the force. Now switching to Saturday, the protest, I was there. Don't condone violence or tagging any of that as bad news. But what I will say is, we still have a big problem in the police department with the dark heart of their souls and what they do and think. I was arrested, and, for complying, by the way. And when I was in the paddy wagon, we had a cop lean in and say, "Taking you to Santa Ana and throwing you to a pack of twelve sheriffs will smash your fucking face."
Oh, my God.
Excuse my language. And then right after that, another one leaned in and said, "I got two words for you guys: not guilty." Ha, 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 ha.
Unacceptable.
So, we have a situation where the justice system is a farce, and we as citizens, I look, I turn around and I look, and there's a cop, I don't know what's gonna happen. And being in jail with the other protesters, I got to hear a lot of stories of what they experienced. And when I got out, I looked at the videos that were online. One, by the way, has a hundred and eighty thousand views, where police undercovers after the dispersal order was given, protesters went to Kelly's corner and all over the city, and undercover cars were driving around the city and jumping out and snatching protesters, and charging them with failure to disperse, even though they were long away from the police department, as I was. So, his comments of not guilty, ha, 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 is just a sick twist of it all. And what do you do? These guys beat him to death and punctured his eye under camera. We had a limp dick prosecutor that did the weakest case you could imagine. Didn't call one eyewitness, didn't call other videos. Even the jury foreman was an intern in 2011 for Rukakis. The jury foreman, out of the thousands of people that they could have chose for jury, he was an intern. So, just think about these things. Absolutely do not hire these guys back, and thanks for your time.
(applause) I don't have a thing to say.
Please, you must address the council.
I don't have anything to say to the people behind me, because this is an illegitimate system behind me. These police are as corrupt as the people.
I'm sorry, you must address the council.
I'm sorry, sir, I will not reaffirm your power. You are letting, you are letting the police officers kill people on the street.
We're listening.
So, what I do have to say is that a number of people here says that they are asking the police to change. This is not the change.
Excuse me, please, this is not, we have a democracy, and we try to respect people.
No, but I don't need to talk to you.
Well, then please talk to these other people outside the chambers.
And police themselves, and delegitimize the police that are killing people on the streets.
Go outside, please.
Not you. I don't have anything to say. But, no, every day, people are dying. Come on, eat gray. Died in New York. My police. This officer, I'm not doing anything. I am addressing the public. What is wrong with addressing the public?
I'm listening. We're all listening.
Tell them that they need to police themselves so that these cops do not get fined, so that the prison industrial complex does not get the money, because this is about making money. And whoever helps protect that bar, that is how you do it. You want to get rid of these people, delegitimize them.
Yes, yes.
Stop calling them. You all have tech devices, nineteen devices. Support your own community. They will not have jobs if we stop calling them, because they're gonna keep killing people, and they're gonna get away with it. Why? Because it's a police state. The police state protects itself.
Thank you. (applause) Looks like the people were interested in what she had to say. Apparently, the council members didn't.
Good job. Don't fuck there and arrest her.
Yeah, let's leave the journalists alone tonight, too. Well, we're taking a short recess now. Give me a chance. After, people exercise anyways, the cold days are breaking. Wow.
(inaudible)
Cause when the council goes on break, they take them up.
Really? Yeah.
I used to make sense like that pin on my backpack when I rode my bike to work.
Good to see you, Patty.
I used to have so much fun. I'd like tear up a sheet, get a sharpie, and then staple it on the back.
It's like it's on hold.
(inaudible)
How are the cats? How are the cats? Good. Oh, by the way, Mous's books are from Port Royal, seven pieces. Yeah, the cream bits? No. I'm sorry. Someone donate the libraries who they left them sitting up for someone to take? Oh, no, not that.
We've got PM beers, it's still inside. Maybe it likes Nirvana, it's a friend of mine. Did you see Tony B today? That was the lead singer of The Adolescents that spoke earlier this evening. Keep up the good work. All right, so we're out in the lobby. The homeless advocate right there, telling him we'll solve the problems. I guess he doesn't beat up on people.
I said, can I just move you to a right place? And that's true, I saw him, God rest him, it was, we were walking up Highland North, and we were pretty far away in the line, he turned to talk to somebody, and we had a staff member, two officers were rushing him around, and he screamed, "Get him out of there." And I'm like, "Oh, my God." Well, I fell down out there, got to Kelly's corner as soon as I can, and when I got there, they, people were there, and there were cars pulling up. We were there, you know, at the train station, it was Saturday, people were there at the corner, at Kelly's corner, we call it, and cars were pulling up and grabbing people on the sidewalk, and throwing them in and resting them. Then when I found out when Adam got out on Sunday, I asked him what happened, and he said that they took him to county, to Santa Ana, and they go, there's people, there's cops waiting for you to beat you, beat all of you up, they said that kind of like a joke. The scary thing was, the cops looked at him, to all you protesters, "I have two words for you: not guilty, ha, ha, ha." Which to me is like a threat. But there, no, it's not, it's, yeah, it's a threat, but it's also saying, "We know we can get away with murder." We just had a trial, we had that on video, so everyone saw that, he got beaten to death, killed in front of our eyes. They had a trial, what a sham that was.
So he wasn't arrested on that?
He wasn't, yes, he wasn't. For not, for not leaving, I guess, quickly enough, but we were, we were leaving.
What branch is here?
Um, I was born and raised here in Fullerton, I'm from St. Jude, lived here in my car lot. My dad bought a house in 1955, always loved my city, but there's, there's an evil in this. There's a black cloud over it since the, since I think Kelly Thomas beat him down. And I did not, had no idea how bad it was, how deep it ran through the city. So, I came out here to protest because I have to. I have to support the family, I have to try to stop this. Police brutality is out of control. It's, it runs rampant throughout the country, and your case after case after case, "Oh, we feared for our life, he was reaching for his waistband, that's why I filled him full of bullets," and nothing happened. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it, and I think that everybody, every citizen should be tired of it, because we have rights. They're here to protect us, and yet they're killing us. And I'm tired.
I'm tired.
Um, not to note, I have before, but I was more listening, I just wanted to hear what's going on, but I was out here to support all my friends.
My first name's Susan, my last name's Cam, and, well, I killed my brother's ex-husband. Um, that was, um, from the town hall.
Glad I got a strong key.
Yes, that's true.
Too many cameras at once.
That was good.
You did excellent.
Oh, yeah.
So good to see you, bro. I was wondering where you were the other day. You did, you did good enough. We all heard you, and thanks for that, man.
They been, man.
I got to hold this up myself.
Sorry. Dropped the whole thing. Trying to do still shots, you know. Tony was good. Are they going back in? Have they reconvened? Is that it? Do we have anybody else inside? I wonder. I'm gonna go check on Anaheim, he's outside, partaking my smoke with cigarettes. Yeah, all the streamers, right? What up, Anaheim?
I heard, I heard what I wanted to hear. Are you on?
Yeah, of course.
Hi, people. From all over, my anonymous friends, I love you guys. I love you, Janey, Unix, Frederick. Um, we're in this together.
We're in this together.
We're in this to get there. Love you guys, really, I do.
Flats.
Peace.
I'm baffled.
It's good.
I don't know if they're back in or not.
I would have been using a couple metaphors.
That's why I had to run.
All right, we're outside right now. Yeah, I'm trying to quit the old smoke, I'm on the fake stuff.
How we doing, buddy? How are we doing? Can we take that for a while?
Fuck, yeah, dude, this thing's got me tired.
Hey, everybody. Hello, hello. Let's, uh...
Let me get you.
Let's do a quick intermission, let's, let's turn it off, so we'll recycle it at forty-five, I'm gonna come right back on. We'll have Anaheim James live, we're gonna stop it right now, so we can let this archive, so they don't get out of hand into the hours like they did yesterday or Saturday. We're gonna stop it, we'll be right back on. Thank you for watching. Tweet us, Facebook us, message us, pass it out, hop on the chat, and talk to us, more importantly, because we love you. All right, peace.
Love is a strong word.
That's right.
We do.